North Plains Plan Commission for December 11th, 6 o'clock. You please rise and pledge your allegiance.
I am in the United States.
Stand. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair King.
Here.
Commissioner How.
Here.
Commissioner Condon Dell.
Here.
Commissioner Parra.
Here.
Commissioner Van Domlin.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Thank you, and Vice Chair Labonte is excused this evening. Your ex officio tonight, Counselor James Sage.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, we're gonna change the order of the agenda a little. Gonna move the election of officers into new business, so that would be the new business A, and then would be application for to fill the planning commission vacancies to item B. So I, that brings us to public comments. Is there anyone in the audience wishes to questions or comments on the planning commission business that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, anyone on the Zoom?
I'm not seeing any hands, no.
Done?
Done.
That brings us now to the approval of the minutes for November 13th, 2024. Are there any corrections, changes? Undername motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November 13th. Okay.
It has been moved by Commissioner Condon Dell, seconded by Commissioner Van Domlin for approval of the minutes presented for November 13th, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
O, nay? The minutes are approved unanimously? Okay, we'll move on to a public hearing, which is a quasi-conditional for DR 24030 green light type three design review. A public hearing was opened in December 13th meeting and continued to remain open and the public record is open. So at this time, the staff have updates or new information they want to present?
I'm sorry, what was that, you're?
You have new information you want to present?
Yeah, just, um, there was an email that came in from the applicant addressing the CWS easement that we discussed at the last meeting in regards to the parking at the southeast corner being in that location, and I shared with you a map that is stamped by CWS showing that they reviewed the proposal and that they're okay with it, I meant to get this to you sooner and I just I missed forwarding this one to you, so that's why I'm giving it to you at this time. And the myself and the city's legal council have discussed this further as well since the last meeting, and everybody agrees that it's not uncommon for pavement to be over a sewer line, as we know they're located in our right of ways regularly and pavement is placed over top of those, so I just wanted to share with you that the applicant had gone out and done some additional not research, but just some additional information gathering for us for CWS to show that they have reviewed the application and the site plan and have signed off on, so we no longer have any difference with the parking in the easement.
And there are further comments on the information that was brought forward, but?
Oh, are you ready for me to go ahead and give it? Okay, I wasn't sure if you were ready for that now, sorry, my misunderstanding there? Let me go ahead and share and hold it back going here. Thank you Chair King and planning commissioners, as well as the audience here tonight. For those who may not have been here at the last meeting, I'll go over a little bit of information just on the forefront of what the application is that we're looking at tonight, and then we'll pick it up with the items that were continued and work way through any comments that came in since the continued hearing. So, we are here tonight for the continued hearing, as the chair has indicated, for city file number DR 24-030 and what that application is. Okay, for some reason that wasn't working. So the applicant is Greenlight Development and they are seeking type three design review approval for the development of a 59 unit mixed-use affordable housing project. The property is a two-acre, roughly two-acre park or two-acre property located in the Brin Hill neighborhood at the corner of Northwest, North Avenue and Northwest Main Street and Northwest Tyrell Drive. I have a vicinity map here I can share with you that shows you where it is. Unfortunately, at the top here, Google Maps is off, this, this is Tyrell Drive all the way through here, Main Street and North Avenue, and this is the subject property. As for the applicable rules for this project, there are two state laws that apply to this. ORS 197A400 and ORS 196, 197A.445. As far as the North Plains Development Code goes, they are the Design Review Chapters, the Neighborhood Community Zone Chapter, Public Facilities Chapter, Street Standards Chapter, and finally the Off-Street Parking and Loading Chapters that apply to the project. When the hearing was continued in November, there were four questions that the planning commission had for staff and the applicant to respond to, two were for the applicant and two were for staff. The two that came before staff had to do with the municipal parks in the Brin Hill subdivision and whether or not there was enough square footage in those parks to accommodate the additional 11 units that are being proposed by the applicant. Staff went back and researched that, and as a result of that research, I discovered that the project was originally approved for 460 dwelling units with 48 multi, 48 multifamily units for a total of 508 dwelling units, which would have resulted in a requirement of 203,200 square feet of municipal park space. When you add in the additional 11 doors with this project, that adds on an additional 4,400 square feet of park space. So that would raise the total up to 203,200. Excuse me, I got that wrong, excuse me, it would raise the total up to 207,600 square feet with these additional 11 units, that would be what would be required for this project. I've outlined all the different park tracks there that are in the Brin Hill project, as well as the basketball court, and with all that, the total provided in the Brin Hill subdivision is 229,932 square feet of park space, so there's more than adequate park space to accommodate the additional 11 units that are being proposed with this application. The other question that was proposed to staff was to look at the intersection there at Tyrell and Main Street to make sure that that was designed to city standards. And I spoke with the city's contract engineer, as well as the city's public works director, and we went out and measured it. And what you'll see here is the standard is two drivelines totaling nine feet 11 inches. That's a requirement when you have parking on both sides, and what they did there at that intersection of Northwest Tyrell and Main is where you see the parking here, that's where they put the curb extension on each side, and the curb extension extends out to the two drivelines, and there was the required right of way with their at the access into Tyrell from Main Street to satisfy the city standards for that particular intersection, so it has been designed to city standards and it has been accepted by the city. The other two questions were for the applicant. One request by the planning commission to the applicant was to see if they could relocate their access to Main Street and provide a secondary emergency access to the property. And then the final question that the planning commission had for the applicant was to address some traffic along North Avenue as it transitions to the east from Main Street. And so I'll leave those to the applicant, but I will share with you that we did receive a revised site plan from the applicant showing that they can get the access out to Main Street, and then the access to the north up to Tyrell will be essentially gated, but it'll be, they'll be using bollards there, removable bollards to block that access, so it'll only be available during emergency times where they can remove the bollards and allow people to exit out both of these points in an, in an emergency situation, so except for emergencies, the access will now be coming from Northwest Main Street into the project. So they were able to address the planning commission's concerns with access to the property. As far as the transportation related question that the planning commission had, I do believe that the applicant's transportation engineer is available today, so I believe they may have some additional comments for you when they do their presentation. Since I do have the revised site plan up, I will share with you that this was the parking that we had some concerns about in the easement. As I indicated, the applicant has provided some additional information to us from Clean Water Services showing that they have seen the layout with paved parking over the easement, and they are fine with the flatwork being there. The only concern the staff has is, as I believe the planning commission and maybe some of the people in the audience know, the city does not regulate private easements. Our concern was when you have a required parking space though, placed in an easement, if something were to happen to that parking space, you know, how would we be able to make sure we still have the minimum necessary? They're over the required parking standard, but I think it would be a good condition of approval to require that any parking that's disturbed within the utility easement area is put back to maintain the proposed parking that is with this project today. And then again, as far as the, the building layouts go, they, they combined a couple buildings. The buildings do not exceed the 150-foot requirement for the, the building size. The access to the property is at 22 feet. Staff has gone through our code and under our parking lot designs standards for two-way vehicle access. It does note that 24-foot wide driveway is required for a two-way access, and so staff is recommending as a condition of approval that that be widened. I have talked with the applicant about that, they did share some concerns with staff that it could potentially lose a parking spot on the south if they had to widen it. They're only off by two feet. And it looks like there may be enough footage there at the north end to be able to widen the access to 24 without losing a parking space, so I'll let the applicant speak to that a little bit more, but the preference for staff would be that that is 24 feet wide to accommodate two-way vehicle traffic, because as we know up at Tyrell at 20 feet, it's very tight, so I think it would be better if we could get that to 24 feet. Otherwise, the rest of the layout is fairly similar to what you've seen before. They still have maintained the same amount of open space with the play area, and they maintain the same amount of square footage for the mixed-use component. They have the trash container or the trash enclosure in, in the same area roughly. They did relocate the, the loading area, it used to be up here, can you see my cursor? I'll use this, might be easier. The loading area. Maybe it won't be easier. It used to be right here, it's now right here. So the loading was moved to this location right here. But they're still providing the required loading area in the required dimensions for the city's code. At this point, I think I'll respond to any questions that the planning commission may have as I get through the rest of my presentation, and then also the applicant probably addressed a little bit more if you have questions on this, the site plan, but those were the primary things that staff wanted to address. We did receive some public comments, we received a total of four letters from two individuals that were submitted on behalf of each other. So we received one from one individual representing two people, and then the second person submitted two, again, on behalf of the same folks, so what staff has done has gone through that with city council, and we have pulled out the relevant questions from all that information, and so I'll provide some answers and responses to the questions that were presented to staff. And so one of the questions that came was that city staff has referenced the Brin Hill Master Plan, the development agreements, the element books as being applicable, but not as provided proof of their applicability. Essentially, all these documents run with the development of the land, and, and so they do apply. There's no specific criteria in the Brin Hill Master Plan that would specifically apply to this property, essentially, the Brin Hill Master Plan, what it did is it set aside the property for the future development of a mixed-use type of development, something other than residential. That's how the master plan addressed this particular property when they were going through that process for the north, for the Neighborhood Community Zone. This property was called out as meeting that one requirement of being a two-acre site, being set aside for that specific purpose. As far as the development agreements go, there was nothing in the development agreements that indicated how the property was to be developed, it's that it was developed pursuant to the applicable codes in the city's development code. In terms of the transferability of that, again, the development agreements, the master plan, the pattern book, as discussed with legal counsel, does transfer with the sale of the property, so it runs with the land. All those agreements run with the land. The second question that we received was there's been no proof letter that the master plan and agreements between Lennar and the local planes can be assigned agreement. Again, and, and speaking with the city's legal counsel, these documents do run with the land, so when it sells to a new owner, those agreements transfer with that sale and become a responsibility of the new owner to fulfill. So they are transferable and they do run with the land, and it is now up to Greenlight to fulfill those obligations that are contained in those documents. And at this time, Greenlight is currently seeking land use approval for the development of that property. So the property was part of a master plan, it went through that process, it's available now for development. In order to develop the property, you need to go through design review, which is what they have supplied through, and that's what we're looking at tonight. Another question that was presented was that the staff has interpreted that the development standard in the code is sufficient to apply a land use designation of commercial, and that is incorrect in terms of what's happening here. As I've indicated, there are various state laws that apply to the development of this property since it's an affordable housing project, and pursuant to ORS 197A4452BA, a local government shall allow affordable housing if the proposed affordable housing is on property that is zone for commercial uses, and that's the key language that's in there, that it is zone for commercial uses. And in this particular case, the North Plains Development Code, specifically the permitted uses section of the North Plains Neighborhood Community Zone, section 155.257 allows for both neighborhood commercial uses and mixed uses which are permitted outright. In addition to that, we also allow mixed uses as a conditional use in the NC zone. By that mere fact, this property is zoned to allow for commercial uses. That meets that threshold of being zoned to allow for commercial uses, because it, it does, it allows for them outright, as a matter of fact. And so that's how this has been interpreted. It was not a legislative interpretation, there's been no zone change of the property, there's been no zone change application submitted on behalf of the applicant. There's been no anything to that nature, it's simply been, here is a, here is an affordable housing project, and is the property zoned to allow for commercial uses? And the answer is yes, it is, it is zoned to allow for commercial uses, so it meets that threshold. This question here is kind of a continuation of the previous question that staff has improperly assembled legislative authority. Again, it infers that staff has caused a zone change of the subject property to occur by finding that the subject property is zoned to allow for commercial uses. So there's been no legislative action taken by staff. What staff did is make an administrative interpretation of the code based upon the applicable state laws to make the ruling that the subject property is zoned to allow for commercial uses. That's, that's all that staff has done in this situation, there's been no legislative action taken by staff. We received the application, the application was for affordable housing, again, it's subject to these state laws. The state law indicated that the property is zoned to allow for, for commercial uses, then it would qualify. We went back, did the research, the property is zoned to allow for commercial uses. So and then, you know, again, furthermore, in a pursuant to 1974454A, a local government is prohibited from requiring a zone change or a conditional use permit for this type of use. And as a result of that, the applicant has not submitted for a zone change, nor has the applicant submitted for conditional use permit approval, because the city can't allow, cannot require that as part of this application process. So those, those things have not happened in this case. The last comment we had on how to do with mixed uses, and as I indicated at the last hearing, the city's development code does not specify how much total floor space of a mixed use, does mixed use development must be dedicated for commercial type of uses. We simply don't have anything in there that talks about a ratio of the percentage of square footage being set aside for the mixed use. We don't have any for area ratio requirements for the mixed use component, nor is there a minimum square footage requirement for the mixed use component, it is simply silent in our code on that. And the, the commoner referred to the definition section of our code, and I put that in there, it's the capitalized mixed use development, that's the definition that follows. And as you can see, it is really a, a statement of what a mixed use development could look like, could be. It's not really defining what a mixed use is in terms of the amount of square footage being provided, and that it must, you know, fulfill a certain nexus there and providing a certain amount of square footage in relationship to the overall development, so the definition really does not address that. So those were the questions that were received, those are the answers that we have in response to those questions and comments, everything that was received was provided to the planning commission, so they have seen all that as well. So, I have some additional recommended conditions of approval that did not make it into the staff report that I'd like to share with the county commission at this time. As you'll see in the revised site plan there, they're proposing festing all four sides of the property, but because the property of us, three streets, all three of those property boundaries essentially constitute a front yard. And so those fences that they're showing on the site plan at four feet need to be lowered to three feet, so staff has recommended commission of approval that all front yard fencing along North Main and Tyrell not exceed a height of three feet as required by the code. Additionally, as I noted on the access pursuant to section 155.657, note five, the minimum aisle width for two-way traffic and for emergency vehicle operations is 24 feet. So staff recommends that as a condition of approval that the applicant shall widen the two-way access to Northwest North Avenue, so it is 24 feet in width as required by the code. And then last, in sure, in order to assure compliance with the Brin Hill Pattern Book, staff recommends that a condition of approval be added that prior to submitting for building permits, they submit their elevation drawings to staff to review for compliance with the architectural pattern book before they submit for building permits to the, the county. So, in terms of recommendations based upon the revisions and the comments and, and feedback that were received at the last planning commission meeting, staff recommends approval of the application with the additional recommended conditions of approval that I shared with you tonight, as well as the ones that were provided in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions you may have.
One of the things that suggested adding two conditions of approval was the parking, recovering of parking spaces and these, then if they were?
Yes, yes, thank you. I think it's an ongoing condition of approval, we could have a condition in there that states that all approved parking spaces will be continually maintained and available for the use of vehicle parking at all times.
And also, obviously, as a requirement for this type of development for the affordable housing, it has to be, do we have a requirement that it's non, owned by a nonprofit corporation and have to continue to be owned by that running the timeframe of the?
Yes, and we discussed that a little bit, Chair King, and, and I know that the applicant discussed it a little bit with you at the last meeting. They do have some state laws that they're subject to, but I think that would be a reasonable ongoing condition of approval to require that the complex is continually owned by a nonprofit and that it is and, and the applicant can touch on this a little bit more, but I believe they said further requirements that they're subject to, where the, the dollars are getting from the project, that the the affordable housing has to be available for 60 years, which is, you know, beyond what you would typically see, typically is a 30 window, and so this one has an additional 30 years onto that, and but I think before we pass that condition, let's hear from the applicant, to make sure that we have that accurate. But I think both of those could be an ongoing condition of approval that I, I don't think they would oppose.
Mr. Parra, any questions of new new information from staff? No. Commissioner Condon Dell?
Yeah, I just have one. I, I noticed that the bollards, Tyrell area, just say removable bollards. I think maybe they need to say for a movie, emergency use only removable bollards or something, so you can just take them out and start using the.
Right, right. We can, we can put it, ongoing condition of approval into the, the decision that says, you know, the bollards shall, shall only be removed for emergency purposes?
Yeah.
Something to that effect, is that?
Yeah, I think so.
Address your concerns, okay?
Any other questions? Commissioner Condon Dell?
Nope.
Commissioner How?
Nope.
Commissioner Van Domlin?
Nope.
Counselor Page?
Yeah.
All right, would the applicant like to come forward, present your new information? Or any comments with staff report?
Yeah.
Yes, by state name and address, so we just have a refresh.
Bollard, Greenlight Development, address 3462 Northeast Sandy Boulevard.
I'm Jennifer Danziger, I'm with Knight Castle Mobley, our address is 1130 Southwest Morrison of Portland.
And if we give up the slides, Steve will go do that, and then I'll kind of reintroduce the projects, there's some new faces here this evening on the commission and in the crowd, so I won't go through it as in detail as last time, I'd save you all a little bit, but reintroduce it and then show you the news. And then Jeff.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm waiting for the slides.
Yes, would you like me to move forward?
Uh, we can't see it on the screen.
You need to turn off.
Oh, I shared it, let me play that again. I'm sorry, I don't know why it's not going away, I stopped sharing, and I tried to reshare. Share that, yeah. There we go, not sure what happened, I'm sorry, Tim.
No problem. Yes, just to get a reintroduction to the Brin Hill apartment, I'm with Greenlight Development, I'm here representing Greenlight Home First Development. We can go to the next slide, Steve. We're affordable housing developers, we're building all over the state of Oregon right now. As you can see up there, you know, we have over a thousand units in, in production, our focus is primarily in a lot of smaller communities similar to North Plains, such as Estacada, Mill City, State and Tilmack. So just again, this is what we do, we're very first in it. We're very proud of it. The next slide will be good. So this is example, again, just a refresher of what our intentions are to build here in North Plains. So this is example of again, just a refresher of what our intentions are to build here in Northland. These are quality safe, stable housing. They have playgrounds, high, you know, high-end signing, high-end product, community rooms, you can see there. They'll add, you go to the next slide, they'll have quartz countertops, L E T flooring. Very large size units, the three bedrooms will be around almost twelve hundred square feet, I believe around eleven hundred. In-unit ACs, washer dryer in units, storage will be offered and these will all be earth advantage gold certified. So again, eco-friendly build. Our, our timeframe on this is summer, probably is late summer, twenty twenty-five breaking ground. And then construction will be about fourteen months. We begin the process of, we've seen up about three months prior to completion. And our partners on this are going to be Central Cultural, which is a great Washington County. Organization focused on, on just housing and resources for folks who need. You can see the example of the rents up there, just for reference again, two-bedroom is going to go for, the sixty percent units will be rent will be limited. At just under sixteen hundred dollars a month. So again, these are, are more of a workforce housing than a lot of the preconceived notions of affordable housing. It's one thing to remember. We will have thirty percent units, which will be about half that. So we go to the next slide. The question always is just again, refresher, we talked about this last time, but who, who can afford to live here, what type of folks? So you see for a good example, is a four-person household, is a household earning seventy thousand eight hundred dollars a year? There are a lot of jobs in Washington County, including some at the city of North Plains, where folks will qualify for these jobs. You know, a two-person household earning fifty-six thousand six hundred forty. You know, one thing that always comes up is how do we find tenants? So just as any apartment, if any of us wanted to go find. Would, someone would show up, fill out, take a tour, fill out an application, go through a credit check, go through a criminal background check. They were income would be verified and they have to pay rent. So these, these homes that we build are subsidized on the construction side. They're not being, rent is not, they have to have income to pay for. The next slide, good. Here's a little bit more of the interior. You can see kind of the, how these developments in these homes look. This is specific, those exterior earnings to the Brin Hill Apartments. But yeah, we're very proud of these, the landscaping is beautiful, these homes are great. We should go to next slide. So yet we met here again in November thirteenth, I believe it was, to talk about our site plan that you see up there. This was the original site plan. It is our belief that this was designed to cope per the city and state legend rules. We had the entrance off Terrell, but we received a lot of positive constructive feedback from the commission here as well as folks. In the town, meeting was continued. We took that feedback. And mainly the main concern, the primary concern, as you say, from that meeting was that entrance off Terrell. Particularly due to the traffic as well as the width of Terrell, as well as the entrance and the traffic in that alleyway. There was desire for that entrance to be moved to Northwest Main, which was what we were, you know, was our homework to figure out how we can make that happen. So if we go to the updated next slide, the updated site plan. So our team worked really hard on this. We came back to this. It was an original design that we kind of had to tweak things and come back, so. Moving the entrance to Northwest Main was the number one concern that we received from, from you all here on committee. And we were able to do that. We're excited about it. It did condense the units a little bit, so they're a little bit more tighter there. But again, all to code, it all looks really good. We believe it's gonna have a nice layout. And we agree that that entrance off Main is gonna make a lot more sense with Palanero to Row Drive is. We did, there was also concern as mentioned earlier about that secondary emergency access. So we proposed. That alleyway will have ballards there, which is the intention of emergency access. And so that was, you know, the two major concerns. We were able to only lose. On-site, I believe we lost about four parking spaces on-site, so not too terrible. There were some off-site parking spaces lost, but again, the preference and the priority was for that access to be on Main Street, which we knew that would result in. Steve mentioned the easements with C W S. Again, we talked with C W S, they stamped that drawing, they understand that. We called, we confirmed with them again that that is very standard, as you mentioned, all our rideways have asphalt and curves in it. Per the condition that was proposed to meet the code or meet the remain. And we can let the lawyers talk about it, but I, I would imagine that the code minimum is the condition that should be met. And I think Steve kind of mentioned that, you know, in just earlier discussion. We have no problem leaving those parking spaces. We never want to move them, but yeah, so. It was as long as the minimum, we have no, no problem. Other issues, all Jeff were talking about traffic, because that was really important as well, but want to touch on the nonprofit question that came up. From Chair King. So the way the law is written without Oregon state statute is that. There's multiple criterias that qualify for that and nonprofit is one of them. We are not a nonprofit. We are, we have nonprofit partners in this, but the, their ownership will not be a wholly nonprofit. The, the standard that we meet is that this is, this property. Will be deed restricted affordable housing at sixty percent AMI for, I believe it's thirty to or sixty years. This property will be deeded for, at sixty years and that is deeded before permits. So we can't. You know, you can make that a condition of permits is typically how that goes. Is that no permits can be issued until that deed is processed. And so that's typically how. That works, that how we've seen it work, I should say. The, the entrance. Widen to twenty-four feet. Right now it's twenty-two feet, which is meets the width of Northwest Main. We can widen to twenty-four. There is room. We lose a sidewalk, which makes the, on the north side, which is a little bit more challenging. For the livability factor of it. Our read of the code, specifically that states the drive aisle. When it's talking in the section that talks about parking spaces with and not specifically the entrance, so. But yeah, we, we can make that happen, but yeah, it wasn't, the code is not, I would say, clear on that. But yeah, we're, you know, we think, again, we can make that happen and I think we're really proud of this change. We're really. Pleased with the feedback you all provided and good that we found some really good solution. And then, yeah, there's a lot of questions about traffic that I couldn't even let Jeff talk about. If you don't mind.
Sure. So Steve mentioned there was one sort of outstanding question and it was not quite framed as a question. So I did some research trying to figure out or, or address what, what the issues might be on that. And so one of the first things I wanted to touch base on was just the idea of affordable housing. It does have a lower trip rate than typical. Multi-family housing. It's about ten percent lower and that reflects low vehicle ownership, just in general, the, the associations. It's based on national surveys. It's not something that we come up with specifically. And there are articles that, you know, P S U has been particularly instrumentally researching that information and. This, we, we aren't even considering the different levels, but in fact, the vehicle ownership and the trip rates go down depending on the target. And I, of AMI that you're looking at, so it's sixty percent. It may even be lower. This is, this is, it's a generic paper that we're using here, but that's one of the reasons why you have built. We did the estimate on sixty, I think that was the number when we, when we first got involved in this project versus forty-eight. Multi-family and why it's only a few trips for. And the other component that's here is we have a, we have a small office now versus we had in, in two, approval two years ago, which was forty-eight hundred. Forty-eight units and sixty-seven hundred square feet of retail. That retail was also a significant generator. While there is some trips that are made with between that retail and other uses, it does add traffic to the neighborhood streets and the combined. Trip generation for the forty-eight units and the retail was higher than what we're proposing now with sixty units in the small amount of office space. So that was one question that I, I hope to answer. The second was related to. Volumes in general on roadway and that really comes down to the whole master plan. And the master plan, the state gives numbers, you know, the, or the original approved master plan was estimated to generate. Three hundred and fifty-four morning peak hour trips, five hundred and forty evening peak hour trips. And five thousand seven hundred twenty-six, we're very precise, daily trips. And that's, that's, that's a lot of traffic added to this area that is reflected in increasing volumes on these roadways. And having part of the team that, some of the previous approvals when phase four and five came in. When that other approval for this mixed use was assessed, even I think phase three. We did look at sort of how, what are the differences? How did that change the overall trip generation? And we looked at operations specifically what was happening at North and Glencoe and then West Union and Glencoe. Those were questions that the agency asked us to look at and. During that process, but this project, when we're coming back in and we look at it, we see that it's a slightly lower trip generator. Than what was previously approved for the mixed use site and then overall the site is. About thirty to thirty-five trips lower in the morning than what was originally approved. About more than a hundred trips lower in the evening than what was originally approved and more than thirteen hundred trips. On a daily basis than what was originally approved. So it is lower even, even than this and you know, that's changes in the number of units. The original approval had thirty-eight thousand square feet of commercial on the site in that mixed use and well as forty-eight units. So even that last approval dropped that number down significantly. So from a, from an overall perspective, we are below the original last plan with this project. In there and then with regard to North Avenue, I think the question was volumes maybe on North Avenue. And then something related to crosswalk at three thirteen. I did look, there aren't, there aren't any recent traffic counts on, on North Avenue, so I don't have an exact number, but I can look at. What's been happening in the area and what the original number that we looked at, which was about seventeen hundred in the existing condition. You know, before the development occurred, the forecast is for over five thousand. So it is, it is growing significantly and measurably. And that's because you're putting in, you know, three hundred homes and that does add, or actually it's. It's three hundred single family homes and another hundred and fifteen or hundred and fourteen. Well, attached housing, so it's, it's quite a bit of housing and, and not surprising that generates a lot of trips. And then the last question pertains to, I think, a pedestrian crossing it through three hundred and thirteen. And I understand, I was not part of the original, I understand that was not conditioned as part of this and Steve verified that. But it is, it is a legal crosswalk, whether there's a crossing, you know, striped crosswalk there or not and. It's important to be judicious with where striped crosswalk or crosswalks are striped for a couple of reasons. And one is you want, it, there's, there's two things that can happen when there's, when they're striped and they're not used. One is that if the driver experiences, there's never any pedestrians, they begin to ignore the fact that there's a crosswalk there. So they become essentially blind to the crosswalk. They're not looking for pedestrians. And the second thing is that crosswalks can sometimes cause pedestrians to be less careful. They think it's a, it's. You know, the drivers are more likely to stop, while they are slightly more likely to stop, they, you still need to be careful. And so in general, that's why we don't see crosswalks striped at every block, even though they're, they're legal crossings. And so the question would be, is this a good location for a crosswalk? Maybe, but is it, is there an increased need due to this project specifically that, you know, the affordable housing? Probably not. It's, it's not going to increase the need for a crosswalk there any more than anything else. So whether that's, that's a good idea that maybe the city does or. Or considers, that's one thing, but it's not a result of the need for this to created by this project. And I think Steve and I did talk a little bit about the fact that there is going to be a transit stop there. It's an informal transit stop now. It's going to become an official transit stop along the south side of North Avenue. But from this, this site, it's more likely that they would cross at Main. Side of the road than cross the other way, just because it's an all-way stop. It's the most, the most protected type of crossing that they have. So it's far more likely that they're crossing at that location if they were walking over to the transit. So I think I've covered. Everything, but I'm open to more questions if you have.
Any questions for the testimony?
Legal counsel, one question about the ownership of the nonprofit corporation. I thought that was one of the requirements of the code. I mean, the OR. Information. When we got that information, I thought that was something that stood out. You know, the nar is not nonprofit, right?
So, well, first of all, that you believe green light is.
We're not a nonprofit.
They're, they are, they're not.
Green light is not a nonprofit.
Okay, so the statute at issue is one ninety-seven A point four four five. And subsection two says a local government such as the city. Shall allow affordable housing if the proposed housing is on a property that is A, owned by a public body, nonprofit. One of two types of nonprofits, a housing authority, or it's a manufactured dwelling park. And it says, or. Be zoned for commercial uses to allow religious assembly or as public lands. So it has to meet either two A, the ownership requirements to A, or the zoning requirements to B. Here it meets the zoning requirements in two B, so two A doesn't matter.
Yes, and, and I'll just share a little bit with the planning commission. There was, in reading that particular code section. An oversight on staff's part, I, I missed the or and read it as an and clause, and so it is an or clause. And you have to satisfy one or the other.
Yep, legislation is very careful about how it uses or and and. One is conjunctive, the other is disjunctive. In this case, it's disjunctive. So it's either A or B, but not all.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else?
Nope, we're here to answer questions.
Apparently we haven't done, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we do further testimony? People in favor of? Hey, any opponent, people wishing to testify again? Please come forward. Say your name and address for the record.
We have separate affordable city, they're together.
My name is Derek Ella Brook, North Plains, Oregon, nine seven one three three. With me this evening is Stu E. Ross. We're responsible for preparing the materials in opposition to the application, the documents that were emailed to everybody to review. I just want to state again, you know, when my wife and I were looking at homes in Brin Hill, townhomes in Brin Hill, we appreciated. The plan quality and the development provided by the neighborhood community zoning. We relied on the assurance of land use stability and predictability when purchasing our townhome, but we believe this is not the case anymore. I want to begin my comments by saying to you all that the planning commission can deny this application. I, I reviewed and understood everything that you were saying, Steve, and your responses. To equip to our questions and statements that we email to you. However, I think that. Apparently is just my opinion, but I think that the interpretation of being zoned for commercial uses and being zoned commercial. Are two different things. I believe that ORS one ninety-seven four four five. Speaks to property that is actually zoned commercial and is not have a little teeny commercial component in it. That is just my opinion. I also believe on the topic of mixed use, how the. North Plains code is silent to the percentage of mixed use that is still allowable or should be in a development such as. Mixed use that is still allowable or should be in a development such as this. Is not a, it's a very subjective judgment. Um, allowing the applicant to provide only three percent. Of the entire square footage of the project is mixed use. Is a judgment called that was made, but that does not. Satisfy what mixed use is and what was promised to us when we bought our house in Bryn Hill. I think that my third and last topic is in relation to traffic and everything, I think it was spoken to a little bit by. The lady ahead, ahead of us, however, in twenty twenty-two, I was reviewing. That application and noticed that there was a. A full traffic study done on that forty-eight unit housing. Development and there were well over three hundred trips per day just for the residential portion of that development. While the previous lady said that affordable housing tends to have less trips. Per day than a normal forty-eight unit housing complex. I personally believe that that's because affordable housing projects tend to be on. Max lines and Tri-Met lines and this development is not. It's very far away from any sort of public transit, so I believe that the numbers that were provided to us were. I don't think, I don't think the traffic will be higher. In conclusion, I think that some of these things are still applicable, even though they were. Judged to not be applicable, um, I. Think that the planning commission should deny the application. Thank you.
Any questions of the testimony? Thank you, sir.
I'm Cindy Ross and um, North Plains resident, Bryn Hill resident and the admin to the Bryn Hill community Facebook. Page, so I get a lot of input from the rest of the Bryn Hill community. Derek, uh, Ellerbrook and I both jointly oppose this application. When we did our um, our documents that we provided, we consulted with a. City planner that had thirty-six years of experience doing planning and that is where we got our information and we still feel. That this should be looked at despite what Steve has said or his reasons. Uh, when I was looking at homes in Bryn, Bryn Hill, I too appreciated the quality of the development provided by the zoning, the neighbor community zoning. I bought my townhome in the first phase of the Bryn Hill project and was excited about moving to North Plains. Um, we, myself and many of the Bryn Hill owners were told this subject property could be developed as mixed use, multifamily, commercial development. And would have the same character as the rest of Bryn Hill, but its zoning would remain as a neighborhood community, the same as our property. We were given the impression that this property would be similar to like a Renko station or even block sixty-seven of the Hillsborough project. Which also had apartments and retail space that would blend into the community with retail space on main floors and apartments on the upper levels. Lennar also informed us that the retail would directly benefit Bryn Hill and the surrounding community with convenient walkable commercial. I don't believe we have that in this, in this project. Now, because the subject property has not developed per Lennar's um, expectations, the city's planning department is interpreting. That it is zone commercial to make convenient for Lennar to sell property to an affordable housing developer. This is a policy issue for North Plains, it is not a matter of interpretation to, to serve the convenience of a developer and a property owner. In addition to the points that Derek made, the city council and planning commission. Um, is required to consider the policy implications of rezoning the property from neighborhood community to either a multifamily. Or a commercial designation, the property has the complication of being subject to a development agreement and master plan with Lennar. Changes such as the bug would require removing it from the Bryn Hill master plan and amending any related development agreements. This process has educated me more than I imagined, I knew nothing about this type of work. The fact that so many crucial codes are so subjective. That they make it easy for a developer to come in and make it difficult for the city of North Plains and its residents. To develop this in the way we want it to be is ridiculous. The fact that we can get a developer to bring in a three percent mixed use. Which the space only benefits the green light inhabitants does not equate to what I feel the city envisioned in their master plan. So in conclusion, based on the points I have made and by Derek, I believe that the planning commission should deny the application. I also request that green light stop their progress until we are sure this has been vetted properly, especially if the pills are necessary. Thank you.
And then, thank you very much. The other opponents?
Don Weber, two eight eight four zero, northwest Carver Street, I live in Sunset Ridge, um. My issue is just to testify, I'm just confused, I guess, by the planning commission itself. And where we've ended up, um, I was told when I moved to Sunset Ridge, we had an acre or so on the corner of Sunset Ridge. That the planning commission had come up with this great idea, they'd have some mixed use on the edge of my neighborhood. Ten years later. A pile of dirt. Uh, raccoons, coyotes hang out there, nothing's ever happened, I was told. That idea was continued to Bryn Hill and I heard the idea and it was, sounded great, we're going to get some wonderful little businesses, coffee shops. Uh, bakery, maybe a little fitness area downstairs, upstairs will have housing, uh, apartments. I have no issue at all with green light, they seem like a wonderful company, affordable housing upstairs, sounds like a great idea. But what we're talking about tonight to approve is not mixed use and it's not what we were told as citizens. It's not what the people that bought their houses were told, they were told what they were going to get. And now what we're getting is not that, so I guess my question is the ownership of what's happened here. It seems like somebody messed up. Or, or, or did the people get kind of duped, did they get told they were going to get something and then this was going to happen? I mean, I guess, I think going forward, if we're going to operate as planning and citizens, we need to have confidence. In these kind of issues and it seems like uh, this went totally sideways and tonight. What I'm picking up from Steve is this is great, we got this thing going, again, my issue isn't with green light, it's with what the citizens were told. Uh, what people like Cindy and Derek, when they bought their places, they were specifically told. You're going to get a cute little coffee shop and, and this and this and this, I heard the same thing. And now none of that's happening, why are we not able to protect, again, my issue is the downstairs upstairs. Downstairs was supposed to be this thing. And now we're not getting it and we're just, is this just the cat, I haven't heard any ownership. Or when this, where this went sideways, I guess at one point in the gathering, I was told, well, the governor messed up. And, and she's the one that caused this, well, at what point then shouldn't the planning commission rezone or do something? Any, anyway, it's just sad for me because my friends in Bryn Hill, they were told. They were getting something and now it's, it's totally different.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike Schertz, I'm North Plains resident, um. Uh, three two zero four zero, northwest Wosco Street. A couple of questions, one for Chris Cream, you had just mentioned, can you read uh. Respeak the nonprofit with the two A. That you recited a few minutes ago.
Uh, yes, under the nonprofit, under the statute, a local government has to approve an application. Uh, if the property is A, owned by certain entities or B, has certain zoning.
And what is that zoning?
Uh, B A is for commercial uses, B B to allow religious assembly or C as public lands, any of those. Uh, city has to approve an application for housing.
Okay, so they're nonprofits, so they don't, they're not a nonprofit, so they don't meet uh, the first one, correct?
They meet the second one, the zoning.
And the site is zoned neighborhood community.
Neighborhood commercial, the neighborhood community which had allows certain.
It does allow it. It does allow certain criteria for commercial, but it's not zone commercial. And it states in there that it's owned, that it has to be zone commercial.
Yeah, I, I don't want to get into a back and forth, but people are frequently misled by the headings in a, in a.
Exactly.
The codes, the, the headings don't mean anything, it's the criteria, it's the text underneath the heading that, that controls and the text in this case does allow for commercial uses.
It does, in, in the uh, neighborhood community.
Yeah.
But, so that needs, there need to be some clarifications in some things, in some of the codes. Which brings me to another point of. Um, one fifty-five point two six one procedure. Can you explain and clarify uh, section uh. Two B two, a master plan proposing forty-nine or uh, fewer dwelling units? So my question here is. They are proposing ten percent. Or, or three percent of commercial use. Office, retail, whatever it be, one of those I believe being a leasing office. Um, so if I am reading this correctly, it basically says with the deviation that they have. And I may be reading this wrong, so. Please correct me if I'm wrong, that they need to meet twenty percent of retail or commercial. And my wrongness.
Again, I don't want to get back and forth, but that one fifty-five point two sixty-one applies uh, when a master plan proposal is submitted for consideration. No one has submitted a master plan proposal for consideration, so that, that section does not apply.
Okay, is, wasn't this included in the?
The master plan was approved.
Oh, God.
Ten years ago.
Right, yeah.
But at that point, these would have applied, but they, this is a different kind of application.
Okay, um. Well, it was clarified, but um, one last question, do the front of these buildings face the ministry? I just heard something uh, tonight that. I wasn't prepared for that, but do these units have front, uh, the front facing the main street?
They're, they're kind of a double frontage building where they have an open uh, center where they access into a stairwell.
Right.
And so uh, it, it kind of serves a, a double, you know, it's, you can see it, you can enter from either side of the building.
So basically, the front of the building doesn't face the main street, it, it, the entrances are in a breezeway, correct?
Um, there's entrances on either side, you, you can exit, you can enter the building from the parking lot or the street.
Right, but what is this, uh, what is? Actually, the, what they're calling the front of the buildings?
I think.
The parking lot or the site that faces the street?
I think this would be better for the applicant to address in the rebuttal, uh, but again, I, I shared with you what, what I've seen.
Okay, because. I need an answer to that question for the next part of my question.
Right, but your, your time's expired.
Okay.
But so I'll leave that to the chair to address, but that's, that's why I'm not going.
Okay, I'll add this, so if there, if it's street facing, our code says that any units that are spaced in a main street. The bottom units are not allowed, it has to be retail space.
Well, that's, you have two, right, when you're, you're looking at the conditional uses and the permitted uses and NC zone, right?
Right.
Right, and so they're different, one says that and the other one doesn't.
So which one do you go by?
Well, we can't, we can't require them to get a conditional use permit. Right.
Okay.
So they can apply as a conditional use or a permitted use. Right? So whatever one addresses the type of style they're proposing would be the one that they're submitting under.
Okay.
Correct, because we, we can't apply, so even if they wanted to go and say it wasn't even permitted as a permitted use, it was only permitted as a conditional use. We would still have to accept the application, but we would not be able to require them to submit for a conditional use permit approval.
Okay.
So we, we would not apply any conditional use permit criteria at that point.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Sort it.
I understand, it is complicated.
It is, and that's, yeah.
Oh, I do want to ask your questions and, and you know, if the chair gives time, I'll, I'll answer more, but that, that's what happened in this case.
Okay.
Any questions? There anyone else wishing to testify against opponent? Anyone on Zoom?
I don't know, not seeing anybody at the moment, let me do a quick scroll, they usually come to the front, but um, I'll just scroll through there and. I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Any other testimony, either for or against? Would the applicant like rebuttal? Answer the question?
Yes.
I think I need to have my name and address read into the record. Um, so I'm Alison Reynolds, um, legal counsel for the applicant, um, and I'm with Stoll Reeves and our address is seven six zero. Southwest Ninth Avenue in Portland, Oregon, nine seven two zero five.
Thank you.
Um, so I, I think that um, one thing that we would like to just have um. Staff and commissioners clarify is that. We are not entirely clear what the proposed conditions of approval are that. This commission is looking to um, impose and what that language is, um, we, we know the ones that, um, Mr. Miller wrote down and those are fairly clear. But I think the ones that were also discussed um, in the original presentation, we'd just like to understand what you're looking to do there so we can. Offer some clarification um, and or ensure this works, um, one example was, I think there was a discussion about the bollards. And having those limited to emergencies, um, I think we could envision a situation where you might need to lower them for maintenance and so we just want to. Ensure that whatever conditions are imposed on this project are actually ones that are, are clear and that we could know we're meeting. Um, and so I don't know how. Maybe to get that clarification, but I, I do think we'd like to have that discussion before um, we're no longer, you know, allowed to speak with you.
Yeah, well, I'll let, maybe the, the uh, planning commissioner who proposed that uh, condition maybe addressed his concern, but in terms of how something might be crafted. If that is where we go, it could be something that says um. The bollard shall only be removed for emergency purposes and maintenance. Um, something to that effect.
Yeah, I, I, I think today's time we're giving you guys feedback, I think we could live with that, um.
Yeah, that's, I think we all have the same intention here, right, based on the feedback from the neighbors who live in that alley. They don't want a lot of traffic, but everyone wanted a second ingress, egress, and so it just kind of comes down to like, these words are going to get formalized in. Very legal documents and so having the realistic clarity and clarity on what can and can't be done is what we want to make sure because. Again, our intention is to not have traffic zooming down that alleyway. But there's, I mean, we can all imagine some situation where there may be some maintenance or something that it's a lot easier to pull those bollards. And utilize it for an upgrade or something.
And that was my intention, I think.
Exactly, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that they didn't get removed and not go back.
Yes.
And then it all suddenly access the city has no recourse to say, need to put those back.
Correct, yeah, and so I think overall our goal is just clarify those conditions so that, because I think, I think we're all on the same page. Based on the feedback with that one.
Yeah, this is primarily the lawyer's fault because I'm always like, are we sure we can read that, because there could be a problem. Um, and so I think the other one that was raised was regarding um, the affordability level of the housing. And ensuring that that was meeting the requirements, and so Tim, did you have additional things on that? I, I just know this stuff is pretty specific with how the financing works and so I want to make sure that whatever the city is imposing is also something that we are. That it doesn't somehow create an issue where we're at odds with two different obligations.
Yeah, just want to make sure that the condition meets the letter of the, the ORS statute, right, because if what we say now gets. Again, memorialized in a condition of approval here tonight, but doesn't necessarily meet the statute, it just creates a long lengthy. Process later on, so I think however we say that is that, you know, something, there's lawyers here, so all you guys prioritize it, but something along the lines of. You know. It's approved upon meeting the necessary or the, the law that allows for affordable housing. Based on ORS statute nine, whatever.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll let the chair address this too, since it was uh, the chair's uh, recommendation on the condition, but um, I think one of those conditions. Maybe has been removed uh, from consideration, given that um, we've addressed the either or clause there, that was in the ORS, um, that was one. I believe of the conditions that the chair was getting at was to try and assure that that was upheld, uh, but because the land is zoned for commercial uses, I'm, I'm not so sure. That's a necessary condition at this point, um, the other one I think would be just putting an ongoing condition of approval in there that says that um. The all the housing shall be reserved for affordable housing. The all the housing shall be reserved for affordable housing for a period of up to sixty years, something to that effect, which would align with um what you're already operating under anyhow. Um, but I'll let the chair uh go further on that.
The original application from last month says thirty years. Hmm. Can I weigh in here? Um, the statute that he's referring to, um it it's also in that same statute, one ninety seven eight point four four five, but refers to some other statutes. Anyway, it defines affordable housing as residential property, quote, whose affordability. Including affordability under a covenant described in ORS four fifty six two seventy to force fifty six point two ninety five is enforceable for duration of no less than thirty years. End quote, so I understa- let me make sure that I understand that what I believe it it requires is in order to qualify. You have to place a restrictive covenant on the property that's consistent with four fifty, ORS four fifty six. Um, that restricts the use of the property to just affordable housing for at least thirty years.
Correct.
That's correct, yes.
And so thirty years, sorry, was on the plan.
I'm sorry, and that has to be recorded?
Yeah, I believe it does, um and so I think that I it would be entirely acceptable.
Yeah, that's right.
Definitely a condition of approval that states that this housing must meet the definition of affordable housing.
Right, I think we can do a condition that just requires the applicant to provide the city with a copy of the recorded covenant.
Right, and that's that's what we, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I I think that would be entirely acceptable.
Trickings of the rest.
Yeah.
Your issues there?
Yeah.
Okay, so we would have a condition um that says uh obviously something to the effect of prior to occupancy of any units. Um, the applicant shall provide the city with a copy of the recorded covenant uh for the property to assure the affordability of the units. Um, and then once we get that copy, we'll put that in the record and that will fulfill that uh condition of approval.
Okay, great. Were there any other, I I guess maybe this is a question um for the group that. It I recognize that you may have additional discussion and decide that you want to impose or think about different conditions of approval. But are there any others that we potentially missed that we should talk through that weren't just discussed and that were not in um Mr. Miller's staff report? Sorry to put you all on the spot, um but just want to make sure we're giving you the feedback.
Because there there were three that you brought up this this evening that worked in the second quarter.
So um the first one had to do with the front door fencing, um which is a requirement of our code that the front door fencing shall not um exceed a height of three feet. Um, as proposed on your site plan right now, it's at um four feet. So that's why we would want to impose that condition of approval.
Yeah.
Let's clear an objective in terms of the height. So I was just trying to get that out of the way. You know, put me back to the beginning, pushing it up there, I mean, um, oops, and so. Um, the second one was the uh widening of the that access aisle into the uh parking lot uh to twenty four feet. And then um and then the the buildings will be reviewed um for compliance with the Brin Hall Community Pattern Book during the building permit review process. Um, which is what we do when you call, I mean, when you submit your applications for your building permit, you'll be coming to the city first anyhow. And we'll be looking at all that, and that's what we will do is ensure uh compliance with the pattern book before we um collect your SDC fees and sign off to allow you to go to the county. And submit your building permits, so it's just a um an assurance there, if you will, that that review will happen.
Yeah, I think because they're. Those are all, yeah, I just wanted to be clear that we're all, because they were on the initial staff report, correct, please?
Okay.
Let's, okay, stop sharing, you good with that now, stop sharing?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And did we have any other um thoughts?
Um, no, I I just think, yeah, thank you for the feedback and the constructive discussion, um. It was, it was, yeah, it was really useful, and again, I think we can do a very good solution.
If you, if I may, uh chair, um if you don't mind addressing the uh gentleman's comment about the orientation of the building, um that would be helpful.
Well, could we reiterate the question?
Um, I believe the question from uh the the commenter was um are the front of the buildings facing the street?
How are the buildings oriented and how are, where is the access to the buildings?
Uh. Yeah, we can look at the site plan a little bit more.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll pull it up here just a minute for me. Sure. I mean, you have question, and the architect has to be deep.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean. Uh, Scotch Hall, uh CTK Architecture sixteen forty five, northwest white street. But yeah, so they're oriented and as uh Steve was talking about, yeah, tendered in the units themselves. Is within that breezeway and the breezeways can be accessed through either side, so all frontages have windows and the main window with the sides are facing the street and their front. From from a zoning standpoint, is on, how was that, uh north, the north south street?
Main, main.
Yeah, um so that defines larger setbacks, but that's amazing to find off of pedestrian access and roadway access that defines the problem for something set back.
I want to stop sharing with this screen. Why wouldn't stop sharing?
You need to stop sharing?
Oh, now, now it's starting. I'm sorry, you, I'm sorry, we're having a little.
Try to get to the side.
Let me see if I can get your site plan up again.
Okay.
Can you undo it again?
Sorry.
Yeah, but, yeah, so then, do you want a pointer?
I mean, yeah, some of those breezeways, yeah, so to access the units directly themselves, um like directly in the post living rooms. And what is off the breezeway, the breezeways can be accessed from either side, obviously whether they're walking up to the sidewalk, um also. Whether it's the one from Maine or to Ralph, um, which is a reference from that side. Um, around the gate then, or fence that will, the three foot fence that will be by or off the sidewalk, so kind of double facing, but. Windows based on both sides, uh parking lot and all streets, main, mainly giving. Presence to the street sides with the windows and.
Hey, are you anything else?
So I'm happy to take questions.
Yeah, any question for rebuttal point, or can I ask a question?
Sure.
This for a publication. Where is?
She made opposite.
This is the top, right in the corner, if you know?
Yeah, correct.
That's that. Wasn't the spirit to be half residential and the person's house? I mean, you're saying this is commercial, this could happen, but where's it?
That's an office, and based on the code, it meets the requirements of commercial. The city code.
So this spirit of the in the misuse, like you have commercial there. Okay, I want to mark the middle of all of it. I'm just trying to clarify that, somehow they got straight down, you just got around the corner.
Yeah, it, so um I I think this was actually discussed during the last um hearing, I I don't know if you are, um, okay, yeah, um, so. We worked with staff to go through the Brin Hall Master Plan that was actually adopted and determine what that requirement was and decided and. Steve, I, or Mr. Blair, I think you could probably um elaborate further on this, but um there is not a requirement for a minimum amount of commercial space.
I think that one requirement, but just to make it the.
What's that?
I was how like you said, get a four man, you know, little box, a little package, and when did that measure, you want to be permanent, I mean, that's not, anybody can be done.
I mean, I I'm not sure there is an answer to that, and I think that um perhaps the answer is that when the planning commission adopted the master plan. They could have decided to put a minimum in, it could have been, you know, any size, but they didn't at that time, and so um. We are faced with what the code says and requires and what the master plan says and requires at this point, and so um. As I I think was mentioned earlier, because of the nature of this uh portable housing project, we are subject to clear and objective standards, and so. Questions about whether or not um, you know, an intent was with that or what um someone thought maybe should be what we would want to see. Are not relevant to this particular development because it is subjected to those clear and objective standards.
With with the with this suggestion here, as much as justice is mixed use versus commercial, because it is mixed use, this can be suggested to be considered commercial. Can I take a little bit, I mean, there's no issues. I'm not sure, Chris, that.
Yeah, it. The city has a definition of mixed use development. It's really more of a description than a definition, it's uh it describes mixed use development as a development that integrates some combination of retail, residential, commercial, office, institutional, recreation, or other functions. Uh, so it could be residential and retail, it could be commercial and office, it could be institutional, residential, all of those would meet the definition of mixed use. And 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 there's no requirement that of for any particular floor ratios or percentage requirements or anything else, it's just this general description. So that's, that's what we have to work with.
So this valid general description, it seems kind of like, lookingish. Has just like the P's, the letter of the law.
Yeah, again, that's, I mean, she was exactly right, that unfortunately, in this case, this is the whole clear and objective standard requirement that the state has adopted and that. We have to follow.
Little panel, it's like been a little like, little small box, like this one there, sorry.
Yeah, and I I believe um Tim may be able to speak to this further, but um this is an office for the nonprofit um developer that this um community. Uh, they've been a part of this community for quite some time, and they were looking for office space, that's not just to serve the.
Maybe the last room space.
What, excuse me?
Maybe the last room space.
They've, they've said that, they've, they've been involved in the design very hands on, and they they've said that means they need.
Good, any other questions of the planning commission? No, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion question for staff before our closing of the hearing? Closing of the hearing at seven twenty two? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the uh. The ER two four dash zero three zero with the conditions, and I don't know if I'll get them all. But uh that there'd be a twenty four foot uh wide driveway access. And that the baller be uh removable ballers to be for emergency or maintenance use only, to be removed. Um, that seemed to be three foot high. And then the Brin Hill Community Plant Pattern Plan be approved by the city prior to permitting. Um, and. I don't know. That uh the property be uh the titles can be recorded as a thirty year deed for the nonprofit, I don't know exactly what it could use for that, but.
Yeah, no, I know where you're going with that, I'll get that.
Okay, I think I hit them all, but.
It would be that they uh provide the city with a copy of the reported covenant.
Covenant, okay, we, no, but I meant I hit every one of the bullet points that we talked about.
Yes.
So most of those conditions.
Additional.
Additional conditions, sorry.
Second. Okay, then moved by Commissioner Hou. And seconded by, excuse me, moved by Commissioner Conadel, seconded by Commissioner Hou for approval with additional conditions, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye. The foes? Those opposed, say nay. All right. If unanimous or a person? Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
Um, you know, our unfinished business really is um for the planning commission at this time is the. UGB relook that um Commissioner Hou is participating with uh right now, uh we appreciate your your attendance. Um, so uh there will be a meeting tomorrow, our second community meeting will be tomorrow from uh six to eight. Um, I encourage all the planning commissioners to attend, um it will be a uh interesting meeting as it will be a hands-on type of a meeting with people doing some. Mapping exercises to share their thoughts with us on where and how the city should consider growing, so. I think it will be a a very um good meeting and and look forward to anybody attending, anybody who would like to attend, please do attend, I think it will be a great meeting. Uh, but that's uh at this time, we deal in finish possession with the operator.
Thank you. We'll move on to new business and uh the item A on the new business is the election of officers. Uh, we'll be uh electing chair and vice chair positions for two thousand twenty five. Um, so I'll open the nomination for the chair position.
I need to hear if you could.
Thank you. There any other nominations? Okay.
Chair King, I need to hear what the, what the nomination was.
Okay.
And you nominated Tom second, okay, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other nominations, we'll close the nomination for the chair position, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those all say nay? Any? Now we'll open the nominations for the vice chair position.
I nominate Levante. Second. Is that what she gets for not showing up?
Um. Is there any other nominations? I did uh reach out to Commissioner Levante and asked her she was uh be amenable to accepting nominations for. Either position, and she said she would accept for the vice chair, so I'm sure she will, so with that. There are no other nominations, all those in favor, Commissioner Levante, retaining the vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed, say nay? Then unanimous for Commissioner Levante to continue as the vice chair for two thousand twenty five. Okay, we'll move on to the applications to fill the vacant planning commission coming up. Um, so will. Does not have come forward, please? Please give us a pre-statement of why you want to apply and fall in this position?
I like to apply for the planning commission, I've served in the past and I've always enjoyed the process of planning and code. Buying proper stuff too. I enjoyed working with you all in the past and hope to get the opportunity to do that again.
Any questions of the commissioner or ex officia? And commission? Well, the doctor? None for me.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
And also we, uh Mike Schirr. Also give us your statement on why you want to join the planning commission?
I've been a contractor for over thirty years, um been the project manager for multimillion dollar companies in the past also. Run statewide energy programs, um I want to be part of the uh helping um plan the city growth. In a transparent, positive way that benefits the community as a whole. Um, I don't have a whole lot of experience in planning commission, so I will get to learn a whole lot of new things as well, so. Um, I also want to try to help get more community involvement than what we see nowadays.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Okay, any questions of the afternoon? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, just uh one comment that and you could correct me if I'm wrong. Uh we have. Will have one position open for a commissioner at large. But it's not a requirement.
Correct.
That the commissioner at large, that it is someone at large.
Correct.
Correct, but we do have the one vacant, we'll have the one vacancy as of the first three year, so. Um if any discussion on preference, because I know in past, we can't recommend both to the city council because they'll throw it back to them, so. So you have to pick a number one and number two, so. I mean, I appreciate anybody applying to the planning commission. I did it a long time ago. Glad I did, so. Any comments? If there are no comments, then I will entertain a motion for recommendation to the vacant planning commission position. As choice A and choice B, if that's your option or.
I would recommend go, move out. I think for. To the name.
Okay. Here a second, I'll second it. Okay, it's been moved and seconded for uh recommending Doug Dunn Camp for the position, our first choice. Uh and also I'm assuming um. And with the rest of the commissioners that uh for some reason he didn't apply, then we would or didn't follow through, we would recommend Mr. Schirr. Okay, so that's would be our rec. Our recommendation then is for uh Doug Dunn in campus, our position one, and then Michael Schirr sits our position two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Okay, all right, thank you, gentlemen. You um and appreciate you uh making the uh application, and I recommend other. Uh positions in the city to get involved, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
For that.
All right, uh and we'll move on to land use applications and the city uh project uh monthly reporting. Are any questions on those that are in your package? Hearing none, uh any, we'll move on to uh planning commission comments. Planning commissioners have any comments for staff or for each other? We're all talked up at once.
Well, I would like to uh say that maybe we need to start working on some. Uh like a little session on some misuse and getting rid of the NC zone and and all that stuff. Started this process and we wouldn't have been here tonight possibly. Had we worked on some of those things prior to this, that seems to be uh the problem with uh the state forces us into a lot of decisions that none of us. Wanted to make, would like to make, so can we get that on? Our agenda to, you know, because we have a another one acre parcel that could also become this, and so. Yeah, let me dig into that for you a little bit. I think what would help um is um getting a little bit better understanding of where that one acre park or parcel sits right now. Um in that subdivision, because it could be reaching its limit where it could revert back to residential growth. Um so let's get an understanding of how close that is to happening. Um the other thing, and Ron, um help me please, um but where are we at with the TGM grant in terms of um? Getting that in, and then when would we know if we were awarded that grant for the update to the entire?
Yeah, so on the TGM grant, I'm currently conducting analysis of our zoning development code to identify the sections that are most likely to. Uh for TGM to take an interest in uh assisting us in updating. Um the neighborhood community zone is something that's at a nexus for TGM, and I think it will be one of our most likely candidates. Um I will be reconvening with the uh program coordinator in January and preparing that application, hopefully to be submitted before the end of January. Um if I'm recalling correctly, the TGM program will then review um and do some internal uh data gathering on our application before issuing a decision. Probably taking a couple of months, and then it's an extended process. Um if we are selected to um receive the assistance. It's an extended process of getting a consultant and then a two-phase code update process, which would take up to two years.
So in terms of getting the award that we would know around the spring time?
I would have to verify with TGM without, but it is a fully revolving program. Um there isn't a set date or anything. It really depends, I think, on their internal reviews and what their capacity is.
Yep, yep, so um. Again, I I wanted to try and get that out there. We're, we're, as you know, moving towards trying to update the entire. If the one acre parcel.
Right.
Um is going to possibly convert back to being allowed to be developed as anything.
Actually, and it just to throw it out as I don't, if if I recall correctly, then it's no reversion date.
Yeah, don't, I don't.
Only the Brin Hill one had a reversion date, the Sunset Ridge does not have one.
Just let me make sure, King, are you saying then that when when Sunset Ridge was approved, um between that approval and the Brin Hill approval. There's some additional language added to the NC zone to make that classification that it was.
Um they, that's something they wanted, and we put it in there that it was five years after the last. The uh building permit uh in the first phase, since that's in the first phase, but the last building permit was in the. In the mixed use housing, so it was impossible for them to do it.
Yeah, my, yeah, exactly. So I I didn't realize that there was a change there, so thanks for kind of.
So the Sunset Ridge does not have a drop dead data, but to protect it, because it also has under the NC zone. Is a commercial use.
Yeah.
They could, someone could apply for the same thing, and I think it's definitely more critical out there. Because any expansion to that area, there's supposed to be another come uh mixed use adjoining.
Exactly.
To make a bigger commercial area, so that's farther away from downtown than.
Yes.
Brin Hill, but it's unfortunate that the state makes they know better about planning our city than we do.
Yeah, I think what we can do um to address this is let's bring that forward in January, the NC code. And and look at it, right, and start tracking, break it apart a little bit in terms of where you would like to make some changes. Um and and then we can start refining that and bring forward some type of a um text amendment for you uh to consider. Um you know, one of the things we'll want to do is get your thoughts and bring that to the new council, let them know uh what you're thinking and get their blessing as well, and then move forward. That would be the appropriate way to.
I always talk about NC zone not being an NC zone, being it all in the R zone, so, so. That there is no confusion, that everything's the same in the whole city. Now, and when there is an expansion, there's not, what area are you in, so.
Well, that's exactly the conversation I'd like to have in January, that you're maybe just kind of, again, looking at that, trying to figure out, do we, do we need to actually rezone the property? Or do we need to take uses out of the NC zone, or do we need to overhaul the zone, you know, those type of things? And so I think when we can look at it all together, we'll have a better idea on the best path forward there. Um you know, I can recommend something right off the top of my head tonight, so. I think that would be a good, good exercise in January.
Based on what just happened, there's some pretty good recommendations.
Mm-hmm, so. So, yeah, we will certainly let um the city council know what you're thinking, and um and then once we go through that session in January, we'll also go back to the council and let them know what. What you'd like to do and and get their buyout and then move forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other planning commission comment? Uh anything for city council? Does our city council or anything for planning commission? Any comment from the city council to planning commission?
Uh no comments. We have a brand new council coming in in a couple weeks. Um I appreciate the leadership of the city planning commission. Guys do a lot of really hard, detailed works, and uh the majority of the new city council will kind of. Next term, uh. Your input's been really appreciated.
Okay, thank you. There's any staff comment?
Yeah, in case you have not heard already, um we will be doing the grand opening on January eighteenth for the new public works facility. Um starting in five. December eighteen. December, I'm sorry, yes, sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you. Been a long night already. December eighteenth, next week, we will be doing the grand opening for that building um at five. Um please join us if you can make it. Um it should be a fun event.
Five thirty is the.
I don't have to be there early, so. But we won't, we won't turn you away if you show up at five. You you might do an extra cookie or something, actually, if you do show up, so.
Chamber of Commerce is doing something.
Yeah, so uh yeah, I hope, hope you all can make it. Um and uh that that's really all I have at this time.
Okay, any other um. Planning commission business, any comments? Um I want to thank Commissioner Van Donald for his service. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah. And uh for everyone else, I want to wish you happy holidays or Christmas, and uh we'll see you next year. We don't see you before.
Yeah.
We're adjourned. Our next regular meeting will be January the eighth, next year.